So I will welcome everybody, welcome to the city council meeting, everyone for Tuesday, July twenty first, two thousand and twenty. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA subsection four zero three dash A. Members of the public may join this meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight two seven six five seven eight two eight three and password two eight seven four four two or via computer at the link provided on our website. Members of may also co- come, excuse me, submit comments via email to info at SanfordMaine.org. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Someone says they can't hear us, just saying.
Well, I can hear bells perfectly. So, all right, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
Which stands.
And.
One nation.
And.
Under God.
Invisible.
With liberty.
Justice.
Justice for all. Thank you. All right, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, Council Hanselman.
Here.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
Council Tuttle.
Present.
Council Lanigan.
Present.
Council Hurleyhe.
Present.
Uh, did Deputy Mayor Hanslip join us? Okay, so, um, my name is Tom Cody, Sanford, welcome. Joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his Executive Assistant, Ms. Larissa Ricketts. Minutes nineteen dash nine eighty-one dot zero one, order to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held on July seventh, two thousand and twenty. Do you have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we'll do roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurleyhe?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes carry six to zero nineteen dash nine eighty-two dot zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session held on the same evening. Do you have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan? Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurleyhe?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carry six to zero. Uh, Mayor's report, nothing uh specific really to talk about this evening. I've I've fielded uh a lot of questions and concerns about different road conditions, different, you know, paving jobs, different uh uh pothole issues, things of that nature. Um, you know, and I've expressed all those to Matt Hill and team and City Manager Buck. And uh, you know, I know everybody's very busy with road construction, which looks amazing. Um, but they they, I'm sure they will get to your unique, you know, concern a- as as they can. So hang in there. Um, you know, bandwidth is short, unfortunately, in that organization. It's high, so uh we will continue to push on now. Um, subcommittee reports, any subcommittee reports to report? I think we had just one, was it just property that last Tuesday?
We had property and um public safety.
Oh, you did? Okay, great.
Uh, property, we talked about some of the work being done by Public Works in the Kimmel Street, Twombly Road, Shaw Street area. Uh, we talked about the Midtown Mall, the work that's being done over there um in response to the grant, but we also got a nice preview of the work that is being done on Main Street. And I know there was a meeting to discuss the downtown, um, which wasn't very well attended. I didn't actually know about it until um uh Representative Mistracchio mentioned it, but by then I couldn't attend.
All right. All right, any other subcommittee reports?
And I I guess I just chime in on the um public safety as we we uh met with uh Eric Smalls, the the Task Force Manager for the um Homeless Task Force, and um got a good update on that. And uh hopefully we have some more stuff to come out of that.
Perfect. Okay. All right, see nothing else, we'll turn it over to City Manager.
Uh, yes, are you still seeing the agenda at this point in time on your screen?
Yes.
We are, yes.
Uh, so I sent this uh abbreviated report, uh just hit the highlights. Uh, we received notification from May Municipal Association relevant to our workers' compensation. Received a dividend check back to us for twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars as a result of uh Good Loss Experience and Loss Prevention Program. Uh, the city's been part of the pool uh and and as part of that pool, seventy-nine percent of the municipalities, which we are one, actually received a dividend check back from loss control. Uh, we continue to work with MMA by engaging with quarterly reviews, uh monthly safety committee reviews and actions, as well as we're working with Workers Compensation Safety Incentive Program to further reduce our coverage cost. On the COVID nineteen front, uh swab and send testing sites, uh Governors Mills via DHHS announced earlier today that uh YCCA, YCCAC, Nassau Healthcare Facility in Springvale has been added to the contracted swab and send COVID nineteen testing site. Uh, so this adds Nassau Healthcare and three other locations to the previously existing eighteen sites across the state. These sites uh come an advent of one million dollars in federal funding to rural hospitals to increase their labs capacities and capabilities to process the COVID nineteen testing sites. So uh there's a an excellent quote in there from Martin Sable, the Director of Healthcare Services at Nassau. He is quoted as saying Nassau Healthcare welcomes the opportunity to work with the Maine CDC to improve access to coronavirus testing in York County. We now limit testing to only Nassau patients, but plan to welcome community members in the next few weeks. We feel privileged to be working in Maine where strong public health leadership and reasonable prevention measures have kept the impact of COVID nineteen low relative to many other states. Uh, so the other states are City of Westbrook, uh Riddington Fairview General Hospital in Skowhegan, Penobscot Valley Hospital in Lincoln, and York County Community Action Corporation. Nassau Healthcare was added today, and prior to that, there was eighteen other sites. Uh, there are no um Maine Health sites anywhere in this. Uh, they had asked for consideration for change in the compensation, uh but that was denied. So Maine Health is not partnering under this agreement at this point in time. They also had concerns as far as the legalities that they were not adequately protected. So the next thing I have here in the report is um, to Cody, our city clerk has put forward the information that nomination papers for municipal offices uh will be available at the city clerk's office beginning Friday, uh July twenty-fourth. Positions available to seek seats for is one, term of Sanford Mayor. It is a two-year term. There is no incumbent as uh Mayor Cody is termed out. He has served the maximum terms under Charter Section three oh one. And thank you very much for that, Mayor Cody. City council members for three-year terms, uh there are two incumbent positions opening up, uh the the seat occupied by Joseph Hanslip and Mara Hurleyhe. For school committee members, three-year terms, there are two incumbents whose seats are up, Emily Sheffield and Kendra Williams. Uh, one trustee for the Sanford Water District, a three-year term incumbent Roland Cody's seat is up for off uh for election. And two trustees for the Sanford Sewer District, both three-year terms incumbents Nathaniel Hitchcock and Keith Patterson, positions are up. In order to qualify for municipal office, candidates must be registered voters with their principal place of residence in the city. They'll need to obtain a maximum of fifty signatures of registered voters in Sanford or Springvale or trustees to the Sanford Water or Sewer District. They only need twenty-five signatures. Uh, papers must be returned by Thursday, September third by four PM to the clerk's office. Um, and after three PM, they'll need to call the the number three two four nine one two five in order to file because the office is closing uh that one hour early in order to process currently uh under the COVID restriction. The election results, I won't go through those. I've attached that to the report sent out to the council. It will be posted on the website tomorrow for everybody to see the official election election results. There was the Democratic primary ballot results. There were the Republican primary ballot results, uh as well as the state referendum questions and the school, the vote on the school uh referendum question for funding. On the school piece of it, there was a total of two thousand one hundred and forty-seven votes in the affirmative, five hundred and eighty-one votes in the negative, twenty-one blank. Uh, so that they had a, we had a voter turnout that day of uh nineteen percent. So that was a very strong showing, and the overwhelming majority of those were by absentee ballot. And that's all that.
Uh, Steve, I I just want to say, uh, I think it's great that uh we're getting a little money back um from uh from our i- insurance company. Um, as you know, you listen to my spiel probably every year to the schools. I think their uh experience credits for uh, if that's the correct term, for workers' comp is too high, and they need to do more to bring that down. And I think this is a a great example uh of of what we can do to save the taxpayers some money. So uh you can tell everybody involved, especially yourself, that I think it's great that uh we're saving money on this front uh for the taxpayers and and let's keep focused on uh workplace safety and see if we can bring uh those numbers down even more and increase our refunds even more. So I think it's that that's great.
Certainly, thank you. We we certainly have a lot more work to do here in the city as well. Uh, you 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 cannot, I cannot be happy with the rates that we're paying currently. Uh, but we've had some presumptive cases of of cancer and such that is greatly impacting that uh those rates. Uh, but we continue to drill down on those. By going the the next step that we're going into, under the Workers Compensation Safety Incentive Program, uh we we seek to achieve all three of those tiers uh to get a further reduction of as much as ten percent.
Very good. Any other questions in the council?
No.
Okay, thank you for that, City Manager Buck. Communications presentations this evening, we have nineteen dash seven seven three dot zero one, the quarterly report on the update of the city's comprehensive plan. And I believe we have Ms. Delavalle with us tonight?
Yes, you do.
Hi there, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, this is Beth Delavalle. I'm the Director of Planning and Development. Um, I would like, before we get into this um uh discussion or presentation, I'd like to introduce you to Molly Kerchoff, who is the new planner in the planning department. Um, unfortunately, it'll be a virtual introduction. Um, Molly, um, would you please introduce yourself?
Hi there. Um, my name is Molly. I came on board at the end of April, working remotely. I moved up to Sanford about a month and a half ago. Um, prior to this position, I was pursuing my master's degree in urban design and city planning, and my background is originally in architectural design. So um I'm very happy to be on board and looking forward to working with you.
Excellent, welcome aboard. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Um, I would ask that um the individual controlling the screen would turn it over to Molly so she can share or or post um some maps uh that we've been generating as part of the uh comp plan update to give you a little flavor of uh what we've been working on. Um, while she's doing that, um, um, I'll begin uh just sort of walking through uh what we've accomplished in the last quarter. Um, over the last quarter, we amended our contract uh and started working with spatial alternatives, um and also with our own IT department to create an online presence that engages the community in updating the comprehensive plan, including but not limited to creating one place where the public will be able to access and provide feedback on various elements of the plan. Um, uh, where we will advertise um public meetings and where we will conduct online forums and surveys. And I'm not seeing the maps coming up at this point, so I'm not sure if Molly has access.
The host has disabled participant screen sharing, so I'd ask Larissa, could you please um enable my screen sharing?
Okay, while that's happening, um, I did want to tell you that at this point, we have received seventeen maps. Um, uh, there, most of them are finalized. There are a few that were still in the process of refining. Uh, the maps include um various topics like population, demographic, housing, historic and archaeological resources, land use, water resources, and natural resources. Um, we have completed most of the data collection for housing, utility, public facilities, and the fiscal capacity inventory chapters. We have um to date uh two of the twelve inventory chapters largely complete with four more chapters well underway. Uh, data collection, mapping, and working on narrative continues on the remaining inventory chapters. So it's not looking like, oh, I see Molly's um highlighted, so maybe we'll be able to get those maps up soon. Um, in addition, oh, good, we're gonna, we're gonna have the maps shortly. Um, in addition, uh, working on the inventory chapters, this is one of our first maps, by the way. Um, I I can't, hold on a second, I can't really see which one it is. Um, there it is. This is actually a map on historic resources. Um, uh, in addition to working on the inventory chapters, um Molly and I met with and updated the city's thriving in place community. Um, we uh laid out the anticipated process and encouraged them to um to uh join us in that process wherever they feel is appropriate, and we will be having a more directed conversation with them as things get going. Uh, we also brought them up to speed on uh the progress that we've made to date. And uh, as I said, we will continue to coordinate with the committee over the course of the update process. This is um a map that we put together on building value. Uh, right now, you can see the two inset maps underneath the the overall map of the city. The one on the left-hand side is Springvale Village and the one in the um the just to the right of that in the center is uh Sanford Downtown. Um, uh, one of the things that we have not yet completed that is uh Molly and I were discussing today is the creation of the inset map for South Sanford, which we requested at the last quarterly quarterly presentation. Um, in general, work, I think, has been proceeding well. Uh, unfortunately, the pandemic uh and the delay in bringing Molly on board uh to replace Joe Scala has lost us some time in the anticipated schedule. Um, we are working uh mightily to catch up. Um, however, realistically, we will probably remain about a month behind where we hope to be in early fall. Um, doesn't mean that we won't be able to pick up the pace as as we continue. Um, establishing the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee is still on track for mid to late fall, and I will be coming back to um to you to discuss that. Um, we do anticipate scheduling the first community forum open house in uh January or February. Um, that was intended to be a a three-day open house, and we're probably going to set it up as a mix of uh in-person and online participation. Uh, this is another one of our maps. This is the uh water resources map. You'll see it still says draft because we just received this one earlier this week, and we're still in the process of compiling comments to refine it, to finalize it. So that's pretty much where we are. Molly will be very heavily involved um in uh uh working on this project with me. Um, she's already um picked up the pace quite nicely, um and is going to be a real asset to the process. And that's just what I have to say. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you for that, and thank you, Molly, for your your help on that. Uh, any questions from the council?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I I'd love to get a copy of these via email if that's possible, just to look at um in a little bit more detail, if that's possible.
Happy to do that. Um, I think that they are small enough to send. I may have to send you multiple uh emails um in order for you to get them all. Alternatively, what we'll do is we'll post them to a a site like Google Docs, and we'll send out um information to the manager's office, and they will relay that to you so that you can access it.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, any other questions from the council?
No.
All right, so, next up is public participation. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of public participation about something that's not on the agenda? Um, if so, you can speak up or raise your hand via the raise your hand um function on the on your control?
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Yes, is Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Welcome.
Uh, good evening, thank you. Um, I just want to blow out a comment in regards to the last PPI um public hearings that was done online. Um, I was part of it. There were a lot of other people that were a part of it, but not of three people could leave comments because they changed the format of the meeting. Um, didn't give anyone any notice um about why they were changing it, how they were changing it, and how to use it. Um, it's pretty bad of three people can only leave comments. Uh, myself, uh State Representative, and our own um Planning Board Director couldn't even access the meeting. Um, can you please look into that? Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I understand there's someone from ATV Club that would like to speak this evening?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mr. Cody, uh City Manager Buck, Councilmen, uh Councilwomen and the other participants. Uh, I am Nick Taylor. I'm the president of the club. Um, and I wrote a letter that I sent to uh the leader of Stanford yesterday. Um, after, again, um, not feeling as though we are part of the committee, uh and, you know, being a part and influencing the decisions of the Trails Committee, uh I think the ATV community and the club has done quite a bit uh since we were established uh in two thousand and eighteen to work with the city uh with their requests of postings, posting game cameras to identify trespassers, to give to the warden services, installing and removing speed bumps, you know, addressing concerns brought to the town council, um taking time off of work, attending meetings. Um, a lot of people have put a lot of hard work into the into the ATV club to uh curb a lot of the concerns, which is why we were established. Uh, but it continues to seem like there are plans that are done to limit, uh remove, or divert ATV access when we only have access right now to five of the twenty-five miles of the trails uh in Sanford. Uh, and the one trail we do have, which is the rail trail, uh is vital to connect our east and west trails, uh to connect us to both the Lebanon Club and the Waterbrook Club, uh at becoming, you know, a destination spot. Uh, as I put in the letter, you know, there's seventy thousand registrations a year of ATV users. Four hundred and ninety-seven of those are the just Sanford residents. That doesn't include the Lebanon Riders, the Alfred Riders, Chapley. Um, and we also put in our grant this year, and sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars of our state grant is being used to help maintain the rail trail. Uh, I think we've done enough work that we shouldn't have to constantly be alienated and not included in decisions on the rail trail. Um, and actually, you know, plans being discussed with landowners to divert us with developing new trails. And the latest plan diverts the ATV club off of the rail trail uh with a fifty thousand dollar grant. Um, for economic development, I was told. And the diversion of ATVs is not even necessary. Uh, it's already a multi-use trail, so everybody can use it. Uh, if we put adequate postings and adequate barriers at the end of the rail trail, uh on Mr. Shaw's property, ATVs can veer off to the right, walkers and cyclists can go forward, and we will still accomplish the agenda of the Trail Committee uh at connecting the trail to Mr. Shaw's businesses on Shaw's Ridge. That way, the walkers have the destination. Um, I didn't want to come here and just, you know, uh air out some dirty laundry we had, so I talked to Councilwoman Hanselman earlier today, uh and she had a great idea that maybe the rail trail should be treated differently than other trails that the Trail Committee runs. Maybe the rail trail, since it's multi-use, should have an equal number of voting members and stockholders, uh and we should treat it differently. Uh, I'm not saying completely, you know, break off from the Trail Committee. I think there's work we can do, a lot of work we can collaborate on. Um, but honestly, I feel like I'm pushing a rope dealing with the Trails Committee now. Uh, I don't feel we're getting a lot of collaboration. Plans are still developed behind our back. Um, you know, landowners are contacted before we even knew there was a a discussion to move the ATV club or to move the ATV trails. So just wanted to bring that up. Um, I'd like to discuss further with anybody who would be interested. Um, but I think, you know, we have enough of an ATV population that um warrants the city to essentially give us a fair shot and capitalize on the economic development of ATVs. Um, a lot of people are coming, even out-of-staters, to ride our trails. And if we could open up more trails to businesses, a lot of businesses would profit, and we could develop as a community together, but I don't feel that's possible right now.
Sorry, muted. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate the comments this evening, and uh we I did receive your your uh information via email yesterday, so thank you for that. Okay, anyone else here to speak uh for public participation?
Um, Mr. Mayor, you you had asked me earlier today to comment on the spray painting, the tagging that was done um Sunday night into Monday morning. Police chief provided me a write-up on that. He's here, so if you would like, I could have Chief Conley comment on that at this point in time.
That would be great. Thank you so much for that.
Chief? Good evening. Good evening. How are you all?
Doing well, thanks.
Um, so as you know, um sometime um between um um midnight or a little after midnight to about s- the first report was about six thirty-five in the morning, we had numerous um episodes of criminal mischief uh or vandalism that occurred um from a, well, at the time, we didn't really know whether there was a pattern or not, but we had numerous. Um, I think we had about seven or eight complaints. Plus, there were several city signs and a uh um a a city monument that was also defaced at this time. Um, so we took the reports that were necessary at the time, and it was assigned to the Criminal Investigative Division. Uh, today I was advised that we have identified uh two suspects, one of which we have spoken to, and that person did indeed admit that uh he was involved in this. They're both adults. We're um, we're looking for the second person to get ahold of him and speak to him. Um, and um basically, um, in a nutshell, the person stated that they got like totally wasted and decided to go out and just um do some tagging. And they just went on this um this walkabout through Sanford, ended up going around Number One Pond, and anything that caught their eye that they uh were interested in, they s- they spray painted um uh either uh either NCO or no culture, because I'm, and we really don't know what that means. Um, I'm not sure they had get asked at that point what the no culture means. Um, so we're not a hundred percent sure on that yet. Um, Officer Detective Adams actually uh took the person around the city, and he ran the route with her about where they went. And what basically happened was they started at Rushton and High Street. They they wa- they walked down Rus- Rushton Rushton Street to um School Street. Um, they walked up School Street to Emery. They walked up Emery to Pioneer. They walked down Pioneer and came out right by the beginning of the pond there, and also where the um um Chamber of Commerce monument is. And then they walked around Number One Pond, the whole circuit, and came back. And um in the process, they apparently tagged about thirty-seven separate um um fences, buildings, monuments, signs, whatever they decided they want to do. Um, there is a map that I put in the packet that um Mr. Buck has that um shows the route they took. Um, at this time, what we're waiting for is to decide whether the state's attorney's office, how we're going to be able to prosecute this, because this could be prosecuted as thirty-seven separate incidents of criminal mischief or one incident of criminal mischief with thirty-seven victims. And each way has advantages and disadvantages. Um, I was asked to um to be able to speak to the penalties for this, and uh criminal mischief is a class D misdemeanor, and is punishable by up to a year in jail and a two thousand dollar fine. And aggravated criminal mischief, which is criminal mischief that does damage of more than two thousand dollars, that's a class C, so that's a low-grade felony, and that's punishable by up to five years in prison and a five thousand dollar fine. Um, my belief is that we're going to have probably much more than two thousand dollars in damage. I think just the damage under the city property itself will probably be I think just the damage under the city property itself will probably be close to that or more. Um Matt Hill is, I guess, um attempting to um quantify the damages and the repair costs, and he's going to let us know what he comes up with for the different signs. And I think he was involved or his shop was involved in cleaning up the um uh the chamber monument down by Number One Pond. Um so as it now, as it stands right now, um essentially this, there have not been an arrest made at this time because we're going to wait for the district attorney to tell us how we should charge them. Um hopefully, we're going to get to charge them with a felony. And uh hopefully, any victims that want to be part of this are going to be able to make a report and become become part of the prosecution. Um so essentially, this case is closed. And um for the sake of a better matter, it was just basically two 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 adults who were trashed and decided to go out and just thought it was a good idea to um gag property.
All right. Thank you for that, Chief. Yeah, I did ask the city manager uh earlier today uh if we could get an update. I really appreciate it. I I would ask the council to hold on questions on this as it is an active uh investigation. Um but it is, it's for sure reassuring to know that um it's closed and uh you've apprehended or at least they've identified the suspects. And so nice work to the group. Uh thank your officers for the work they've done here, and I would really appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Relate it.
Excellent. So we're still on the public participation this evening. I I believe Libernet wants to speak.
Hi, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to talk a little bit on uh collaboration on the rail trail. Um we do have two good examples of collaboration on the rail trail. Um there's two prob- two two problem areas. One is in the condo area of Springvale, um neighborhood complaints. And then another area is around Gearing Pond having to do with uh beaver activity and erosion of trail. Um in both cases there, that that collaboration was initiated by the Trails Committee. We were very happy that the ATV club uh was interested, and we worked very well on those two areas. Um and we hope to have some success there in both in in addressing problems there. Um th- there is one area where um maybe um the ATV club didn't feel like they were consulted. I can understand that. Um this is a, we've been trying to develop a trail to Shaw's Bridge for walking and biking for ten years. Um they've been in existence two years. I can understand them feeling like, hey, this is a plan that's been hoisted on us, but you know, in fact, yeah, it's because it's an old plan. We've been working on it. The ATV club did make one suggestion in regard to that plan, um which was to, let's have a trial. Let's um let's invite people to walk and bike up to Shaw's Ridge and uh and just try it out and see how it see how it goes. Um we've taken them up on that. We're going to be promoting that this, you know, ne- the rest of the summer. Um we feel like it's a win-win project. Um the ATV club gets what they need, which is connectivity. We're going to maintain through connection to the depot and to the power line. And we're going to get a piece of trail that has been underutilized, um we think partly because of uh ATV use. So we're going to give it a try. Uh that was the ATV club's suggestion to us. We took it and we'll uh we'll do it as a trial. Uh we still hope to apply for a grant in in the fall. Um but anyway, we do have some good examples of collaboration, and these have been initiated by the Trails Committee. One example of really lack of cooperation has been this spring when the ATV club opened up our trailer ATV and without permission and never, never apologize. Um anyway, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next up is, I believe, Dave Parent wants to speak.
Yes, uh hello and and thank you. I I just want to respond a little bit to the what the ATVers said. Um first off, it was the Trails Committee and I think the city council that wanted them to organize, and they did organize, and they've dealt with a lot of the issues that they've had. Um they've also become very popular, which has created some other issues. Uh I, there are, there are a lot of strong-minded people on the Trails Committee, which is the reason that things get done. People like Hayes and Carpenter, who's been with us since the start, uh Lee Burnett, um Tom Gagne, uh Dolly, the the, I mean, the list goes on. These are not people that sit on their hands when they have something to say. Um so I can imagine that it may be a little bit intimidating for the ATVers uh for Nick to come in um and and experience some of that. I, the the Trails Committee does not have the ability to close the rail trail. Um my understanding, anyway, we would have to go to the city council and ask them to close the rail trail. Um have there been threats made? Probably, but they can't do that. We used to have an ATV representative for many years on the Trails Committee. We haven't had an active one for a few years now. Nick and Matt do show up to the meetings, which is great. It's wonderful. They didn't come to the one last night and chose instead to post something on Facebook and share it with the city council, which which I told Nick I felt was unfortunate because he had some, he had some good comments in there. Um but I think there's a lot of misunderstandings after reading his letter. This plan to improve that section of the rail trail, we've been trying to do that for ten years. We lost out on a grant um quite a number of years ago, and we've just struggled with it. The the last part of the trail, a hundred yards before the power line, is actually owned by Richard Shaw, doesn't want ATVers on it. It's it's a, it's an issue we've been trying to solve for a while. There's been no way to get around it. When uh Mates did the lobbying, Jonathan May.
David, I'm gonna stop right there.
Um when Jonathan, uh I would like to continue if that's okay?
Dave, Dave Parent has a floor. Please, we respected your time. Lose your respect. And listen, just Dave, hold on one second. This is not going to turn into a debate about the trail system, okay? I know that.
Oh, I could, no.
No, no, no. Hold on, hold on. It's not, this isn't, this is, this isn't directed at you, Dave. I'm just saying like, so we've heard from Nick, we've heard from Lee, I know Matt Leggett wants to speak next. You're speaking. I I I'm I'm going to cut you off here in a minute. So if if there's.
Okay.
Th- this isn't a trails debate. If you have a public comment on things that haven't been discussed yet, great. If this is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm giving you a little too much. You know, I I apologize for that. Um so so let me, let me just finish that thought quick. We saw this more as an opportunity um to make this happen, and 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 if it isn't, it isn't. But I do want to say good things about the the ATV group. They have improved the way that ATVers um, oh, I I don't know what I call it. They, their respect for the trail users. They tend to stop and say hi when I go on by on my bicycle. They pull over, they're very polite. There's a few that are an issue, mostly dirt bikes, but that's always going to happen. So they've done some great things, and they have organized. But I I think they need to get involved in the Trails Committee at a membership level. Um send somebody there. Let's work things out. Uh rest assured, the Trails Committee cannot shut down the rail trail to them. They'd have to go to the city council, so you you're safe on that one. Um and and that's all I have today. I I I'm sorry for going on a little too long there, Tom.
Uh it's okay. I I it's more or less the topic. So again, this this isn't, it's not a debate. This is not what public comments are for, okay? Participation. So Matt Leggett, you raised your hand apparently. Do you want to speak this evening?
No, I'm just going to let it be. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else here for public participation? Okay, thank you very much, folks, for coming out tonight. All right. Public hearings, none. Consent agenda nineteen dash nine seventy-three dot zero one. I will read this because it's not on the public hearings. Order to approve the request from Springdale Social Club, Inc., twenty-two Bridge Street, Sanford, Maine, for extending their alcohol consumption area for the dates and times specified in their request for the attached diagram and to authorize a city clerk to sign on behalf of the city council. Any issues relating to the consenting agenda? I'm hearing none, so I'm going to declare the consent agenda approved. Old Business nineteen dash nine five four dot zero one, order to approve the proposed amendments to City Code Chapter Seventy-four, Alcohol and Entertainment, Chapter One Twenty Fees and Chapter One Forty-nine Licensing, in order to make the licensing process more business-friendly by reducing cost and approval waiting time, by moving certain license types from Category Two City Council Approval to Category One Administrative Approval. Side must be read on two separate meetings. This is the second reading. Got motion?
Still moved. Second.
The only comment I, Tom, the only comment I wanted to make on this is I did have someone comment about um how if there was a problem with a um liquor license um or business that had a liquor license, how that would be processed. And I said it can always be pulled out and required to go before the city council. Am I correct? If there are issues?
Yes, yeah, that is correct. So any any sort of um signs of trouble or concern, it it would be immediately brought to a city council agenda.
I just wanted to make sure I was correct in that.
That was the agreement. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this one? I think it's pretty straightforward. Again, just trying to be as business-friendly as we can and and not waste people's time and money with, you know, old newspaper ads, but we don't really have any newspapers left. So it just seemed to be sort of an ineffective waste of of time and money. All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. We'll do um roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Earl Hee?
Yes.
Debbie Meyer Hansen, did you ever join us? I'm also a yes, carries five to zero. New Business nineteen dash nine seven six dot zero one, order to see what a percentage of unencumbered appropriations the city council will vote to commit, the city council to transfer with city council approval from one account to another within the twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget according to chapter, excuse me, Charter Section Six Thirteen. Got a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
I have this one, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Yep. So our finance director was unable to be here this evening. Uh this is a motion that's put forward uh each year uh that would allow the finance director and myself to move up to two percent, uh which for the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget would be five hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars on our uh budget that's proposed uh that has currently been adopted at twenty-eight million two hundred and eight thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Um we've never had to move that type of level of money ever, the two, the two percent. For example, uh this year, the budget that we're working to close out now, the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, um we will, we will have um move movement of point three three percent um or eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars movement across all departments uh in the city combined. Uh but this is a matter that's uh allowed within the charter, so we're asking for that authorization again this year uh should should such need present itself. It may become more relevant this year than than in others uh because of the COVID impacts. We're still trying to uh come to a full accounting on that. We've been in a hold pattern. The state's Budget Forecasting Committee has been meeting throughout July. Uh it is actually this week or or maybe as late as next week that the new budget forecasts are going to be put out. Uh from my weekly conferences, both with DECD as well as uh with both the York and Cumberland County Managers, everybody's impression on this is all across the board. I think everybody was thinking it was a much more bleak environment uh earlier in the COVID process, but now that we're seeing what the response is is in the tourism uh in the southern part of the state as well as especially, I spent a lot of time in the northern part of the state on the weekends, and they're hitting record numbers this year. So uh what that true fiscal impact is, is anybody's guess until the Budget Forecasting Committee comes out. So at this point in time, we're holding. Uh but again, uh administratively, I would ask for the authorization again this year to move up to the two percent.
Is that what we did last year, Steve? Is that the same number?
Yes.
I I would say, Tom, we have been doing two percent for twenty years.
All right, well.
It's kind of a standard, and it it very rare. I don't even know if we get anything even close to it, am I right? Uh city manager?
No, no, we're point three three percent if if everything closes out as we're projecting right now. So again, this two percent, it does not add to the municipal commitment. It has not changed the municipal budget as as approved. Uh it simply allows for a movement from one department to the next uh to cover expenditures as might be needed. So for example, this year, there's a fifteen thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars uh movement in general assistance uh which is waiting for a ten thousand dollar uh award to come back under the CARES Act. That additional money was was there because of the COVID impact. We had to move funds from other departments to cover that that particular cost. And all of this will show in the audit uh when the audit is completed. Um.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one. Um Steve, well, in terms of a reporting mechanism, when that shift has to happen, would that be something that we would hear from at the quarterly meeting or financial review from um, you know, our finance office or that we can bring it to our attention uh just in a manager's report?
No, I would ask for that to be put into the quarterly uh report to the city council. So I'm I'm looking at the projected transfers uh currently as 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 we're sitting here. Uh but we haven't closed the books out for this year. Uh once we close those out, those will be finalized and report those out at that point in time. You'll also see that in the uh audit report. They will report like on administration personnel, general assistance, all of those departments, and they will specifically um outline those transfers uh as part of the audit process.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, CNN, we have a motion with a second. Um Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Is he on mute, Larissa? I don't know if he's muted or not. Okay.
Yeah, there he's, he's on, there he goes.
All right.
Is he a?
Yes, okay, Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Earl Hee?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm also a yes, carries six to zero. All right, next up nineteen dash nine seven five dot zero one, order to authorize the city to expend in addition to the amounts otherwise raised and appropriated under this budget for city purposes, any unanticipated, unbudgeted surplus gifts, grants, requests, devices, or revenues from any other source. Got a motion?
Still moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. City manager Buck, another housekeeping item here?
It is. Uh this stems from a recommendation as far back as as attorney Brian Dench uh that was with the city at the time of the charter, the last charter commission and the formation and approval of that particular charter. Um out of that element, he's always made the recommendation, this used to be approved at at the annual town meeting format, that is not addressed in our charter currently, so he made the recommendation that annually the city council consider this, this would cover the city council for any appropriations that come in. Uh take, for example, the um the last um grant that was awarded that the council just accepted uh from uh DHHS, covered the COVID nineteen expenditures and such. Um time to time, somebody leaves a piece of land to the city. They might bequeath a gift, uh things of of that nature. So uh Brian Dench always made the recommendation that if the council passes this particular motion, that it covers them, uh and then they would authorize that at the time of receipt and or expenditure.
I suspect, Steve, this is even, given the potential for um assistance from both state and local, uh state and federal government this year, COVID, this is going to be even more use, um more beneficial to have this than usual.
Absolutely. I would concur with that uh strongly, yes.
Okay, so we have any other questions from the council?
No.
We have a motion, we have a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
I think he said yes. Council Earl Hee?
Yes.
All right, uh I'm also a yes, carries six to zero. All right, nineteen dash four ninety-seven dot zero one, order to approve placement of signs stating no parking between eleven PM and five AM in the three parking spaces on the southeast side of the driveway leading to and from the police department. Excuse me, now for authorize the Sanford Police Department to write and enforce tickets for violations. Throw a motion?
Still moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, who wants to speak on behalf of this one?
Uh Chief Conley is here tonight to speak on this matter. This is a matter that has been looked at over the course of of not less than two years worth of time. Uh finally, the resolution is coming forward to make such signage enforceable, if so passed this evening. So Chief Conley?
Yes, thank you. Um when I I brought this up a couple of years ago because we were having a problem and still do have a problem with people parking in the three spaces that are on the side of the driveway, and especially for people that leave cars there for a week or two weeks. And even more importantly, during the wintertime with snow emergence And even more importantly, during the wintertime with snow emergencies, because if a car or cars are parked there, then they can't plow, and then it creates a mess because that driveway is only really just exactly two car width wide. And if you park there for any period of time, it makes it difficult to get through. So we just wanted to make sure that there was a period of time during the day when vehicles would not be able to park there so that we could have them moved or prevent them from being there or necessary tow them if it was a snow emergency. And so we have the signs made, we're just waiting for the approval so we can put them up and be able to enforce them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council on this one?
Nope.
I feel like we already did this years ago, but I guess here we are.
All right.
We have a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Earl Hee?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries six to zero. And lastly, this evening, 19-956.01. Order to approve purchase of a new fire department pickup truck and equipment from Cork Ford in Augusta in the amount of $32,261. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
This item went before public safety last week, but I'll ask Chief Bonardi to report out on it at this point in time.
Thank you, Steve. So we met with the subcommittee last week to explain to the council what we're looking for. In the CIP this last year, we asked for a new replacement vehicle for the fire marshal. And in the process of deliberating what we needed for a fire marshal's vehicle, we were looking for a four-wheel-drive vehicle so it can get in and out of construction sites easily and get around during the winter, during emergency situations. But what we decided was the best spending paradigm sort of thing for the city was to use a little bit heavier duty pickup that we would normally put it in and then use it for three, four, or five years. And at that point, our regular utility pickup that we have for the fire department will reach its 20-year mark and will have to be replaced. So we're going to use, we're going to then downgrade that truck to the aspect of a utility vehicle in about four or five years. And then we can go with a more economical sort of vehicle for the fire marshal. We went through the main state bid list for the purchase price of this truck. We've been talking to the dealer that has handled that, which is the Cork Auto Group. We have the truck that we have designed for the best purpose of the fire marshal's use and for an extended life after the fire marshal is no longer using it. So without getting too verbal about this whole thing, if I'll answer any questions, right now, we're looking for the purchase price of $32,261 from the Cork Auto Group who holds the state bid on this particular truck.
Great, and you said that this is under public safety?
Yeah, public safety discussed this, and the major question we had for him is why the size of the vehicle? And he answered, and he answered it well that, you know, this is, the intention is for this vehicle to have other functions as well as move down the line over time.
Okay, any questions from the council on this one?
And Mr. Mayor, a question is, this is within what was allocated in the budget? The $32,000, et cetera?
Yes, to answer that question, it is. We put in for money to purchase a truck and to outfit it with equipment, light, radios, the whole nine yards. That's all within the CIP figure that you have under the CIP for replacement of the fire marshal's vehicle.
Okay, thank you for that.
Perfect. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, great, so we have a motion with a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Earl Hee?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries six to zero. Thanks, chief.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that concludes the regular portion of the agenda. Councilmember comments? Council Hanselman?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple. I'll try to be fast. One, I just wanted to share that I did speak with both Nick from the ATV Club and Dave Parent with Sanford Trails at length today to try to better understand the situation based on the letter that we received. And I have to say that I think that both parties, at least as represented by Nick and Dave, really are on the same team but don't realize it. And I really hope that they can work together and find a way to collaborate. And, you know, there are a lot of things I discussed with both of them in terms of trying to kind of troubleshoot and think of ways to help make that happen. I don't know if anybody's still on the line, but, you know, I certainly can see the benefit of an ATV person being on the Trails Committee as well as a Trails Committee person being on the ATV Committee or joining those meetings. So I think they're really, both want the same thing or maybe just approaching it or not communicating well about how to make that happen. The other thing is that there is next Thursday, the date's changed a little bit, on July 30th, a distribution from, sorry, if you can pull it up, Pylend Farms, the USDA, and the Episcopal Diocese of Maine. And they are actually bringing to Sanford about 1,000 boxes of dairy, cheddar cheese, milk, potatoes. So a great opportunity for the community to benefit from a program under COVID where Pylend Farms, a local farmer here in Maine, is giving away dairy. And that'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. At Willer School, kind of along with the Sanford Backpack Program distribution as well as the distribution of personal items from the local church as well. So I hope folks can make it to that. And the last thing is, unfortunately, I don't believe I can attend, but I wanted to share my congratulations to Dale Burke on his promotion, which we'll celebrate tomorrow, I understand, to a tenant with the fire department. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Council Stackpole?
The only thing I have to say is to everyone, please stay diligent, stay safe, wear your mask, social distance, and wash your hands. It's not over yet, but keep up the good work. Other than that, I will pass.
Excellent. Council Tuttle?
Yeah, I can only repeat what Council Stackpole says about personal safety. And I just have one item. I've been getting a number of calls from folks on the weekend about speedy oil on Main Street again. So I didn't know if a city manager or kind of what police chief to look into that Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
That, Council Lanigan?
Yep, just wanted to congratulate Franny's for opening up downtown, a new business downtown, which is great. Council Hanselman, so congratulations on that. It's great to have another great anchor business like yours come into downtown and invest in our downtown, which is so needed. And then I'd also like to compliment what Council Hanselman said is we have a Trails Committee that I know four or five years ago when I first got on the council, really concerned about, you know, an aging group of members and looking for some new blood in there and new help. And I think it's an opportunity for the ATV Club. You know, I know they only have five miles of the 25 Trails, but it might be an opportunity where they help out the Trails Committee and the Trails Committee is helping them out, and it becomes a really good team. And it's a great tourist attraction for Sanford where we don't have the beaches and the ocean. So I just want to, you know, encourage them working together. And really, communication is the key to everything. Just communicate, and I don't think you can go wrong. So thank you so much to both groups for all that you do for our city.
Thank you for that. Council Earl Hee?
As of Wednesday, after we had our property subcommittee on Tuesday, I believe Council Lanigan, Council Hanselman, and myself have agreed to work with Ian Howseal on the downtown stuff that involves so that the community conversation is consistent, and we're helping with both the city side and the community side. So we've all agreed to participate a little more heavily in the downtown work, including the Midtown Mall grant and the Main Street work as it moves forward. So with your blessing, I'm assuming you're not going to mind us taking on more work if you don't have to, right?
Is that to me?
That's to you, yeah.
Be my guest. Congratulations on that.
And with Council Hanselman and Council Lanigan both having businesses in the downtown, I think it'll be a good mix.
Carry on without me. I appreciate it. All right.
Are you sure?
Yeah, just a little, yeah, yeah. Thank you, though, for going above and beyond. I mean, you know, downtown's obviously critical to the future of the city, so it needs some focus and, you know, so thank you for that. I want to congratulate all on behalf of the Franny's Donut Group. That looks amazing, and we'll be down to do some tasting soon. That'd be great. Want to thank the PD and the chief for following up in regards to the graffiti. I heard a lot about it in the last 24 hours. It was very upsetting, very sad for the community to see that kind of destruction and sort of vandalism, particularly the Chamber Monument that was vandalized and had graffiti on it. That was not a good image because there's a lot of people that worked tirelessly to keep this community afloat when it was in really, really dire condition. And that monument really is a dedication to the work they did, you know, 70 years ago. So just to have local folks just, you know, really have no respect for that history is a very sad situation for the community. So, you know, I'm glad these folks were caught. I hope that they're prosecuted under the fullest extent. I have zero sympathy for that situation. So chief, if you're still listening, I hope you can advocate on behalf of the city to make sure the hammer comes down on these folks. There's zero excuse whether they were intoxicated or not. There was obviously some level of foresight that went into it. So please do what you can on behalf of the city there. That's what I had. I do have one future agenda item. I've received a few complaints if the Public Safety Subcommittee can look at the speed, the miles per hour, the speed limit signs on Emery Street as it goes down the hill, I think, you know, from Main Street down to Emery Street. I think that there's a bit of a racetrack, so a very wide section of Emery. And I've been getting, I know the chief has as well, you know, concerns and complaints about speeding along that section. I don't know what we can do there, but just if we can have a discussion at Public Safety about whether it's a signage problem, whether it's just something we can do, that'd be great. Any other future agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And it's along the line of the Trails. I didn't know if property subcommittee could talk about. So when we've originally kind of laid out the different committees that we have, Trails was kind of left open-ended, whoever wants to join can join, but maybe there should be more of a discussion about what membership we'd like to make sure always exists on there, including some members, some people who are involved with the different aspects of the trail, who use it differently. Maybe it's time to make sure there is better communication from both ends. I agree with Ann that, you know, even a Trails Committee member should be on the ATV. They shouldn't really be that separate. They should be working together for as many multi-use trails as we can safely accommodate within the community. So maybe a little discussion on, you know, what kind of, what kind of people we would like to see, make sure they're with the Trails, and ask Trails members to be with the ATV Club. Just a slight discussion on that.
Can we, as a preface to that conversation, can we, I'm not sure if it's you or it's a group of people, but I'd like to see a proposal versus a discussion.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? I don't want to spend an hour talking about it. We really don't have any sort of gender or direction to go there. So I don't know if members from each group can sort of, you know, give us a list of who they would like to see?
Or maybe a suggestion of how they'd like to see the makeup of these committees. It's unfortunate that there is this butting of heads because I agree with Ann, I think they're actually closer in their thought process than they realize. But I believe there's misinformation flying around a little bit. And I think, you know, one side is saying, well, this is what has been said by a property owner. The other side is saying, this is what has been said by another, like, this is what this property owner said to me. So if that property owner is saying different things, maybe there should be, it should be able to hear that information so it can be corrected and formalized with the property owners, I guess.
Great, so I would say that I personally would like to see some kind of proposal. So, you know, prior to it getting to property, personally. Just because I, you know, brainstorming with 25 people on a Zoom call is not effective to me, anyway.
Okay.
So if we can have, I don't know who would spearhead that.
I think Council Hanselman and I are willing to try to spearhead kind of getting some sort of an idea of what they would like to see together.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay, we'll see none. Stay safe, everyone. Thank you very much for joining us for this relatively short meeting, even though some of us have been here for a couple hours. But thank you for joining us. I hope you enjoy the next couple of weeks of summer, and we will talk to you in the beginning of August.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, good night, everyone. Take care.